All right, thank you. All right, good evening. I'm with call this meeting at six thirty. Morgan, Claire, would you call role?
Yes, Jim Trader.
Here.
James Cartman. And then Fro.
Here.
Mark Stat.
Here.
Cindy Winton.
Here.
Tom Durk.
Yep.
And I'm here.
I have a motion to approve the agenda. So I'll say it. All right, discussion? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Although yes as well. Have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of September twelfth, twenty sixteen. Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Although yes as well. Board President. Um, coming. Well.
The party was really well attended, they said.
Excellent. That's all I got really for meetings. Anything going on? So Randy, what do you got?
Um, we're kind of back in the rhythm. We started having, you know, like the district leadership meetings and the administrative team and technology and committee and those kinds of things. So we're getting that going. I talked to the association and I'm gonna meet with them on a monthly basis. So I'm getting a little into the routine which probably do. And working on a technology plan, trying to clarify some curriculum stuff, getting the budget pretty squared away. So that's what I, that's my life.
Committee reports employee relations.
Randy, do we wanna say anything about employee relations at this point or?
Uh, you know, why don't you go ahead and tell me? We got base rate.
Yeah, so we did meet with the representatives. We were able to really nail down the CPI of, you know, what we can approve together.
Yeah, we will.
Yeah. So they, they were on board with kind of our plan. Um, there was some questions just kind of on approval, so Randy was working with that. Finishing up the final approval status. So it's getting in almost done.
All right.
With teachers.
Public inputs.
What was that, Randy? Last one, last one.
All right, district business personnel. Um, do I have a motion to approve five point one?
Yep.
Tom?
I'll second.
Cindy? Discussion? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Although yes as well. Do I have a motion to accept actions five point two through five point six?
So moved.
And Cindy is? That's fine, that's fine. Discussion?
You went through which one?
So we're adding three, basically three more full-time positions or two, what, two full times and two half times?
Yes.
Okay.
Where, where are we at comparatively from years past to now with special education, students and staffing?
Well, students are up about twenty from when I first came.
Okay.
Okay, you know, two years ago. Um, staffing, I have, I did this for Randy. We should have made a copy. We didn't make a copy for everybody?
No.
Okay, I can run and do that. Why was I saying? Say it out loud, okay? So I have from last year to where we started this year, okay? So in terms of comparing last year to the beginning of the year. Four elementary teachers last year, four point five this year. Um, we had a half-time behavioral interventionist and we have a full time now. So that's, you know, an increase of half of both of those positions. We had six full-time EAs. Um, this year we started with seven full time. We had five part-time. This year we only started with three. You know, so that was, you know, depending on how you look at it, you know, um, an increase of one professional staff, an increase of one full-time EA but a decrease of two part-time EAs. So that was kind of a wash there. In secondary, the number of teachers has stayed the same. It's four teachers, four teachers. We increased one EA. So we had six EAs last year and we increased to seven this year. You know, so the overall, if you're looking at the overall picture, if you approve what, you know, we are proposing, um, for this year, it'd be, you know, a half-time teacher, half-time behavioral interventionist, four full-time EAs, and the retiring of two part-time or repositioning the two part-time. So yeah, there's no doubt that it's an increase, you know, I don't deny that.
Oh, you have twenty more students?
But you have more students and the students, like I said, that we got, so it's like we gained ten students this year, lost seven, you know, with, but the difference in the needs were so incredibly different. You know, so it's like out of the ten that we got, you know, at least six or seven of them have really, really significant needs in lots of areas, you know, where we lost a couple LD students, a couple speech and language students, you know, kids that weren't necessarily really high maintenance, you know, that needed a lot of significant needs. So I don't know if Deb or Dale wanna talk a little bit about, you know, why they feel like, you know, one more person, you know, is needed.
Even the first.
Well, um, part of it is just, you know, having the support there, but I know planning for at Mesa, the big thing is medical need. Um, you know, that's our big need that we have or we have or are going to have shortly.
So in Black Earth, it's just, I have a sheer number of students that we have with specific needs and just trying to make sure that we're getting all those needs met, um, from the IEP standpoint, but also from none, like I have a bunch of students too that haven't qualified for special education but also have some needs. And so by putting that extra person in there, it allows me to have a little more flexibility, 'cause I have, you know, two to five students in certain classes of those five rooms I have EAs in right now. And so it's like when one's going here and they have to leave the room, they leave all the rest of the students unsupported. So by having, and I did the two part-time ones, 'cause I could give a little more flexibility in how I use them throughout the day, um, to get certain times of my day covered that are a little bit stronger in need. Um, and so for me, that maybe is a little bit more flexibility to be able to have that EA support so that I can be flexible if the student's acting up, I can move another person in to help cover those other students that are left in the room. So, um, you know, I mean, you know, the support piece of it is huge from the IEP minutes standpoint, but it's also important from the, um, you know, from the support piece of even allowing those other students to continue to, um, have a safe environment, a learning environment for the rest of the students too. So having that support there allows us to have some of that flexibility to be able to support all of the students, special ed and regular ed students, you know, in a whole, in the whole scheme of the whole day kind of atmosphere. So it just gives us a little bit more room to work and help do that. I think Dale's to the Bill Banks that he brought in for professional development, because you can look at helping deal with student needs two different ways. One, from the teaching aspect of it and what we do in our classrooms to keep students engaged, but also from that support piece that we need to meet certain needs that can only be met in another way. So I think between the two, we're gonna, you know, come together and we're gonna find a way to help meet, meet the needs of all these different students. But right now, there's just definitely a large, um, population of students that have more time and support in the classroom that's needed than what we have available support right now, so.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing is, is that there's just, it's, we have a few more numbers percentage-wise, but the variety of needs is much greater.
Yeah, yes. And especially like that five walked in our doors since September ninth. And out of those five, four of them have a lot. They really have a lot, you know, two are at Mesa, two are at Black Earth. We're probably still pushing our limits a little bit, but I'm definitely working on how to use everyone to the fullest potential. Um, so I'm hoping that even with these two, it'll be just that little bit more, but it's, it's still pretty tight.
Well, we're not screwing anything, you guys has.
Yes.
Ethical skills.
That's the key point, Deb.
Yeah.
Key point, Deb, you mentioned, it really supports all the kids.
Right, right.
It just does.
Okay. Any more discussion? Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Although yes as well. All right, do I have a motion to accept actions five point seven and five point eight?
Um, question?
Cindy? I'll say it. James? Sandy? Discussion?
Yeah, what is that about? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Just access to council.
What about Randy?
Oh, okay. Yeah, it might not open up, so.
Oh, yeah. I read it though.
Oh, there it is. Yeah.
All right, um, so any more discussion? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Although yes as well. All right, do I have a motion to accept actions five point seven and five point eight?
Um, question?
Cindy? I'll say it. James? Sandy? Discussion? Yeah, what is that about? I'm sorry, I didn't. Just access to council.
What about Randy?
Oh, okay. Yeah, it might not open up, so.
Oh, yeah. I read it though.
Oh, there it is. Yeah.
All right, um, so any more discussion? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Although yes as well. All right, six point one, budget, budget issues, finance.
I, we're just, we're kind of getting at the point where it all falls together, which is good, 'cause we have to get the annual meeting stuff underway. But, um, so I tried to touch base with you around, um, some of this stuff generally. First thing, you know, you got student enrollment feeds into it, property value, state aid feeds into it, revenue limits, the whole thing. So just to give you an update, student enrollments, seven sixty-nine, which is a little increase from last year, that's good.
Well, two years in order to what? Does Hubbard grow to seven hundred?
Yeah, it was six ninety.
Seven hundred?
Six ninety or something. Cheryl, I don't know about it, but I remember working sub seven hundred. Um, if it was here with seven hundred, it was a year over seven hundred. Yeah, before.
Three, it was close.
Yeah. Open enrollment, which is good news for us, less than we thought in terms of outs, and frankly, that's what allowed us to kind of accommodate all the increased staffing costs. Because that helped out. So it's seventy-two out, forty-eight in, and that's a little less than last year too, so that's good. Full certification of property values, Baird does a big, you know, Baird gets into Department of Revenue, does some things. They think we're gonna go up three point five. I did check on Black Earth, or Cheryl did, Isaiah.
Mm-hmm.
Black Earth's down, but the district as a whole is still up.
Okay.
And so that helps when it comes time when we set the levy. That's a little bigger by, so it shouldn't be as many dollars and pennies per thousand.
How much did it go down?
Yeah.
Two point eight percent.
Okay. Thanks.
So that helps. Uh, we'll go on state equalization aid. Cheryl and I ran it today based on some updates, and we think it'll be twenty thousand, probably less or so, based on the best stuff we have at this point. Yeah. You know, that costs you about two tenths more on the tax line. So it's, it's relatively minor. I think we should be plus or minus fifty thousand on one point four million, so we'll find out pretty quick. But I know a lot of times you almost have to post your first annual meeting stuff, wait till you get the real aid and then make an adjustment for the second time it goes in the paper. So we're in pretty good shape there. Uh, I wanted to revisit the referendum this year. Uh, your authority was one million eight seventy-five. It was one four two five last year, and then there's your history, so to speak. So we're going up to that kind of numbers. And we'll get those soon as we get these other things that we can put it in this forecast model and we get a good handle on, on what we got going on in terms of what we need. And right now, the current budget is about levy increase, I'd say three point five or six percent where we are since Friday. So we'll find out pretty quick. I'll let you know as soon as I know. But good news, the budget fits. We can get this staffing in there and, um, I'll revisit, uh, you know, in like the next month or so, you know, prime rise, what we're trying to do with maintenance and that kind of stuff and staff development, curriculum and technology. So those are the big four, so to speak, and, you know, utilities and, but, sorry. I think we're in pretty good shape and already to call that part of this process done.
Okay, so seven, seven point one, district newsletter. All right, this is a discussion from what happened a couple of weeks or a month or so ago, where the committee talked about changing the way the district newsletter was done, going to more of electronic, but somewhere along the line, two things happened. One, it never came back to the full board. And two, something got lost in translation where it was completely canceled rather than being sent out and asking who still wants it. Because right now, it currently goes out as a bulk mail, which is great in certain respects, and in some respects, it's the biggest trash day of the year and of the month. Um, so what is the board's pleasure? What would the board like us to do as the committee with public relations as far as the, as far as it goes? 'Cause the committee's recommendation, bringing it forward, what should have been done, should be, or was going to be, continue the newsletter, send it out to people if they want it, whether it is a bulk mail or not.
And I did contact Helen Paper and ask her if you could run an addendum saying, you know, listen up, if you still want one, you know, paper copy, contact us. Um, I didn't hear back from her, so that's, it works, I guess, but that's an option.
Because?
For people. There's still, it's an option to keep a paper copy if they?
Because in the likelihood, people want it to be expensive, just as cheap as sending a bulk mail out, just keep it a bulk. But this is kind of a way of finding out who wants it, 'cause we need to kind of, the idea, the message behind it is great, but it also sometimes needs to evolve, so.
Well, my opinion is that we continue to send it out bulk mail, but I don't think we need twenty pages of, um, fluffiness, so to speak. I don't think, I don't think we need something from the nurse every month. I don't think we need a full page from each of the principals. I don't think we need a full page from our superintendent. I don't think we need all the extra little fluffy stuff that goes in there. I think what you need is a quick paragraph from all the principals where we're at, a quick note from our district administrator, any important information that's going on, so like as we're getting into referendum, um, to update people on that. So they may, they may be thicker at that point in time than they would be, say, in, you know, March or April after, after the, after the election. Um, I think you need a lunch menu in there, and I'd like to see just the quick sports schedules for what's going on for the month. Just a quick paragraph, I mean, on the backside of a page. You know, lunch menu and sports schedules on one page, and you could carve that thing down to about five pages, keep people informed, and cut your costs in half.
Well, is that how bulk mail, I just don't know if that's how bulk mailers work, if it's by the size?
I'm talking about your copying costs.
Oh, the copying costs.
Bulk mail, bulk mail costs are probably.
For the state.
By the, by the weight, I'm assuming. I don't know that for sure, but regardless, that's the cheapest way to mail out is bulk mail. And, you know, I, like I said, you can cut your copying costs in half, you can, there's different ways to do it, to streamline it so that it doesn't take our staff two days to put a newsletter together.
Well, I think that was one of the things that the people who contacted me don't like. I mean, they don't want a page through twenty pages of a email to get this.
Especially if you're out in the boonies. Now, I've got the fastest that I can get for DSL through TES, which is at best slow. So, you know, when you're trying to download stuff, um, if there's a lot of people on my line, I'm the very first one off my box. So I've got it better than anybody else past me, but if there's a lot of people online, it, it drags down, it'd take me a while to, to have to download some stuff. I mean. It, it is manly, but it's not impossible. No, it's not impossible. And, um, so I'm, I'm opposed to sending them out through the bulk mail. Um, because we don't really know how many of them reach, reach people's homes. We can't tell. So. What do you mean, we don't know how many? It goes to every single person. Right. But how many of them sit down, devour the information?
And I think that that's what the committee originally intended to do, was to send out like a kind of a final one, that wasn't a final one, it's like, if you still wanna continue to get this, call us or send it back, put it on the list, we know we're getting it to you, and then determine the number from that. If there's an overwhelming number that we still want it, still do it. There's no reason not to.
Did we receive any phone calls from the last one?
Well, we never gave them the information that we continued to send it.
They don't tell them.
That was, that was, that was lost in translation.
But any feedback though, I mean, did we get any feedback officially? I think Courtney said a few people called and wanted to have them added, but.
But I think something else, maybe a small, small mailer saying, okay, would you like, would you like to still continue to get a paper copy of it? And seeing the number, and then the thing is, then we can still send those people a paper copy, if it's cheaper.
All I can tell you is that since we started doing that, I've heard more comments about thanking, thanking me, or, you know, just thanking me, the board, uh, and the administration for putting that out, because they feel a lot more informed. So.
Well, that's about the thing.
You said you wanted to make it smaller though. So what parts, what parts are they informed about? Do you, do you need to know what's going on with the nurse?
Well, I don't, I don't think this is a reason why we cut information, because you have to look at everybody. Maybe some people don't like the physical mail, some people don't like the bulkiness, but there are other outlets digitally that we can add the fluffiness. We're doing the Facebook page, we have the email. If people want it, it's, you know, it's there for them to read it. We shouldn't just cut it. You know, I agree, sometimes it's, I don't care, I don't care, but there are people that maybe do care. So if we're emailing and doing other things digitally, why not put it out there?
Right, but I think that, I think we start from square one, which is what we originally intended to do, was ask who wants it. Make sure to develop that list of who still wants it. Plenty of people still want it, do it that way, because again, it's the tale of two, it's, basically, it's kind of in a way, because of the way rural internet is, you know, to a degree, it's the have and the have nots. If you have and you have access to the internet, I'm not saying everybody doesn't have access, but I'm saying that there is a portion of them that do prefer the school way of doing it. The way we originally intended it to happen was send out who wants it, send it back, we'll continue to send it. If it's about the cost of a bulk mailer, we just continue to send it directly. There's no reason not to. So people will get it either way. It's just trying to be more efficient with our time and with the resources, that's all. I agree with the pairing double. I totally think, I totally agree with that, I don't need to know what's going on with the nurse, the lunch menu. I don't know, it depends on if it's something.
What's that? Are you gonna edit it? Or what do you want to edit? Edit it. I think Cheryl.
Well, and I guess I would, you know, I would disagree with editing down the principal reports. I think those are very, it's, it's talking about the things that are going on in our school. A lot of it's the good stuff that's going on in our school, and that's what we wanna talk about, and that's what we wanna keep in the forefront of our, the citizens of Wisconsin Heights. But to answer one, one other thing, to answer your thing of downloading the full file, you can actually send individual files, say, you want the sports schedule, here's a link, this is the only thing you're gonna download. They can be very, very tiny files, so they don't have to take a lot of bandwidth to download.
And, and you keep asking me about editing and all this other stuff. What, when we put it out online, it's not gonna be edited, it's not gonna be put together, it's not gonna be formatted in some sort of thing, that you can't just get whole print? I mean.
No, he's saying who makes the call, like what you cut out. If you wanna edit it down to a small, like who's making the decision what to cut out, I think, is that what you're saying?
See. I think Peggy puts it together, doesn't she? Or?
Courtney does.
Courtney, yeah, Courtney does, okay.
And she puts it together based on what everybody sends her, and she just tries to arrange it to make it work.
All I'm saying is that there's stuff in there that we can, that we can pare out or pare down.
Right.
So that it doesn't have to be twenty pages long. That, that's all I'm saying, but I'll tell you, you know, I, I just, I have to ask you guys this question. Do you, and you're gonna say, well, why is this related? Do you know why we have passed the last few referendums?
People feel like they're connected, they feel like they're informed.
Exactly. And I will tell you, if you, I know, I know that you're thinking that, well, they can still be informed, we can still email, we can still do this, we can still do that. Yes, you can, but to do all that right now, as we're heading towards referendum, it's, it's going to make some people feel like, you know what, what are you hiding? Why, why are you not informing? Why do I not know what's going on? Why do I not know that, you know, whatever? I'm not gonna look at this little three by five postcard and know everything that I need to know. Some people rely on that to get their information when it comes to referendums. I mean, I don't, I don't, I really don't care what you guys decide to do. I think you're making a mistake if you don't bulk mail it, but you can do whatever you want to.
What do you say about bulk mailing?
Well, and I don't think we've, we've closed off the option of when the referendum time comes, of doing some mailing and getting a lot more out there.
We still have to do that.
Right, so that's what I'm, I mean, it's.
But, but you know, Mark did a really good job explaining the referendum in great detail within that district newsletter. You don't get a whole lot of information on a little three by five or five by seven.
No, and nobody's.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, right now with that referendum.
To Tom's, to Tom's point, it's, it's sometimes, and I'm going off your point, it's sometimes being able to see what you pay for. I get it. But I'm not saying ending the bulk mailing, I'm saying, why don't we just send out a flyer saying, hey, if you wanna continue to get it, write us back or call us. Let's generate, let's, let's see who's really getting it, really responding, because we wanna know. And I think that that's a good place to start. Would the board care for the committee to take that responsibility at this point and try getting that out?
The, the biggest thing is that if you're going to go to, let's say that you get, I don't know, pick a number, three hundred people that call in and say, yeah, I want it mailed to me.
Bulk mail.
Is it bulk mail? Or do you individually mail? Straight up.
That's true, that's bulk mail at one point.
It's about a bulk newsletter. About, my understanding is that bulk mailing, that's about four hundred per the month. And so, you know, that would be kind of your break even. I mean, the biggest, the biggest thing is.
And right now, we bulk mail to like twenty-six or twenty-seven hundred people, and then an additional hundred people, we mail them out to, that we actually put postage on. But I do not know the cost of how much we have to put on each one of those.
We just, we threw last month's.
Why did we do that?
There's people in the area that aren't in zip codes or something. This is only my knowledge of them.
Part of that being on a route and different.
Right.
Yeah, there's.
Still in the district, but not getting hit by that bulk mail.
It'd be a mom's address.
I didn't, you're ready to give us more, it gives us more of the, you know, kind of pure way to say, yeah, it's getting out there, we're still doing the right thing. It validates whether or not.
Sandy and Tom, when people complain to you, do you tell them to call us or call the district office and complain or?
No, I just said, if you wanna copy, they're talking about still mailing it, so call.
Yeah, 'cause we already, apparently we already do that.
Well, we didn't, it was ended.
It was done.
It was done. That was the thing, it's like we, and that's.
I mean, we were already mailing some of them anyway.
Oh.
That's what Cheryl just explained, right?
So that's not still.
Yeah. You know, I had, I had one email regarding it and encouraging us to, to send them out, okay? And it was, it was an interesting, it was through email, so that's a good thing. And it's, it's a friend of mine who runs a, a different organization, and they produce a newsletter also, and they put it out through email. It was just sort of the, just sort of the irony there, right? I didn't pick it up right away, I was a little slow.
Would the board like the committee to look at this quickly and get this out to see where everybody's at, the committee voted?
I think the point to really think about is, we're talking about twenty-seven hundred people. I think we, I think the committee takes it up and we quickly get it out, and see who else can get that on there, bring it back to the board, let the board decide. If there's a substantial number, that's a break-even point, so to speak, and it's a point of efficiency where it's just easier to do a bulk mailer, prepare it down with your bulk mailer. Is that fair?
Fair.
Thinking one thing we could eliminate would be the menu.
See, no, that was the only thing I took, that I took off of the-
But it's not important for you now, is it?
No, it's not important for me now.
Do you send it home every month, Austindale?
No, because it's in the newsletter.
They rip it off and people put it on the fridge.
Mine, mine was on the refrigerator for the last eight years from that, from that newsletter.
But it could be in Austin's little weekly update to all the parents.
Yeah, we could send it home, that would be that ideal.
Or is there a link on the website?
Yeah.
People can all print it off themselves.
Yes.
Doesn't have a printer. Sorry, just don't. No, I'm okay. I'll be all right.
That says a lot.
So, the board isn't doing this in committee and turning it off?
No. Sounds like we don't need to, sounds like we just need to go electric and just be done with that.
No, 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 absolutely not.
That's what it sounds like to me.
No, absolutely not, I still want to know the number.
I don't think that was the conclusion we came to.
Well, that's the impression I get.
I think the board-
Did you? Say, you just said we're going to, we're going to see how many people want it.
How about you come to the committee meeting?
No, that's fine, you guys, go ahead.
All right, you're fine.
So, Isaiah?
Yep.
I'm confused. And I'm not being a smiley out. We've got a newsletter ready to go now.
Right.
And we're wrapping one up, so what are we supposed to do?
Can we add an addendum on the, on the, is it already printed?
No.
No, no, because we're, we assume we're not printing.
Is there any way we can put on there, printed, do one more print, put on there, if you would like to continue to receive this in a paper copy, please contact someone and get your name and address on the list.
And instead of-
At the school, you sure we could do that? Secretariat says that-
I mean, yes, we can do that.
Let's do that.
On the front page in bold.
We can do that.
Bold, constant.
And then mail it out this month.
It weighs it.
Yeah, but if we could do that, that would be the best. I would appreciate that. I know it's a pain, thank you, sorry in advance.
And then mail it out this month, is what you want.
Yes.
Correct.
And then it's, comes back to us, the committee will look at the numbers, we'll bring it back to the board.
Well, and even maybe ask, encourage people for feedback, if, you know, if you want to do this.
When it goes out, make sure people are saying, when you get one today, you need to call the board.
And then people like-
Perforation.
Do you want this, yes or no? Well, it doesn't have to be perforated, they can just cut.
Right, but does that make sense for any?
That's fine, I just didn't know. One more time, we're gonna add a verb about-
Yep.
Not a verb, a big.
A big.
A big blurb.
That takes place in-
A giant word down, big blurb.
That takes place in-
And put Tom's picture.
And how much does it cost to bulk mail it?
The bulk mailing part of it's about three hundred and seventy dollars, and then we have the additional hundred that we mail.
So, and, in, in, in the big, in the big piece, we are going to say what?
That if you'd like to continue to receive-
A paper copy.
A paper copy of the newsletter.
Contact.
Yep, contact.
Don't you want to, don't you want to know how they want to, because we don't have everybody's email.
No, but they'll find it at that point. You could, well, put a verb in there, find it, right? Are we both seeing those online, too?
Unless you tell them, look, you need to contact the district office, either give them a valid email address or tell them you want to mail it to them. If you just tell them you want to mail, and, and they don't, and they don't reply, they're done getting it.
If you get one in the mail and you say, and you don't reply, you're not getting it.
So, so electronically, we were gonna do that by email?
We were just like-
Yeah.
And it would be posted on-
That didn't say that you have to contact them for your email information?
On the last one, I put it in the face.
I don't know, yes.
Oh.
So, we just want the neighbors to say, hey, I defer now, or you can just email.
Now, I'm just asking you to call with the mail addresses.
We are looking at-
It was me who just did that.
Providing us as an electronic-
Can we add something to our, to our website, that, that, like a link that you can click on, that you can type in your email address, and it'll,
Yes.
It'll automatically populate into a big list, a big list for, because I mean-
So how much is the standard?
My problem is- No, I get it, I get it, it's, it's, basically, it's changing address, because it's going from a hard address to an email address.
Yeah, and if you don't have, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I get what you're saying. But Austin, what do you have on your email list?
Four hundred and eighty-five parents.
How many?
Four hundred and eighty-five parents.
How many kids are in high school?
There's a total of about four twenty, like middle of high school.
All right, so I'll read. So this will be our last printed copy of the district newsletter. Our monthly newsletters will now be sent out via email. Otherwise, you can still stay in touch with all the news, will be to check out our district websites, or visit our Facebook page. Please check, please make sure your email address is current and up to date with your child's, children's school. If you are a community member and no longer have a child in the school district and would like to receive the newsletter, please contact Courtney in the district office, or by email to be added to our email list.
Okay, well, don't put that in yours, put that on its own separate sheet, so that it's right there and that's all people see, yes. This is the last one.
No, that's, that should be pretty much by itself on the front, and then flip it over with, you know, upcoming dates in the back, just one, two page.
Like, it should just be this. Do you agree?
I think it should just be-
It should, no, it should just be-
No, it should be by itself.
The bottom section.
Should just be right here.
Should be the whole page.
Yeah.
Should be by itself.
So then Randy's moved into the second page, just being important.
Now you're on the second page.
All right.
I don't care.
So, now in that, you can bulk mail. In that, we don't have the option.
Correct, so you're adding that option.
Add a piece of that if you want it.
If you want a physical copy of it.
Give us your address.
Give us your address, call with your address.
And I'll look into that interactive link button, too.
Yeah, that's a scoping, that's-
You could easily do that.
Sure.
Okay. All right. All right, all right. Moving on. So, district business donations. I have a motion to accept eight point one, action to accept, uh, what is it, thirteen hundred and twelve, or one thousand three hundred and twelve and fifty cents from the Wisconsin's PTO for IXL annual license for both elementary schools.
Oh.
Smart.
Um, yep, discussion, thank you, PTO, this is very helpful for math.
This is amazing.
It's an amazing program, it's awesome, thank you, PTO. More discussion? Uh, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yes.
Tom? Although yes as well. All right, so eight point two, donation of four Packer tickets from first student valued at three hundred and eighty dollars. Should we accept it?
Some of them.
Oh, I know. There's seven of us.
Seven, oh, yeah.
So, James, James Wilson's in.
James and Emily.
Did you say it?
I'm for the last two, they don't even hear me. You just walk up and you say somebody else.
Moving on.
So who is it?
It's Bart. Okay. I skipped earlier, it's been a while.
He's up for the raffle, right?
You're up for the raffle, yes.
Are these for the, uh, game in London?
Yeah, we closed air fair.
Uh, Cobuson's gonna bus you, or who's gonna bus you. First student's gonna bus you there.
First school bus.
Bus you there, all the way to London. All right.
Exactly.
Um, so, due to our discussion, hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Although yes as well. All right, district business, student issues. I have an action to approve the early graduation at the end of the first semester in January twenty-eleventeen.
I'll make the motion. Be second. No, she lost that one.
Nope, she wasn't, I just don't want that way. All right.
I'll say.
All right, thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Cindy?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yeah.
Although yes as well. Set committee meeting dates. This thing, what was your, do we need another committee? We have a bunch of committee meetings in there, I think, for player relations, to get, uh, working with all the employee groups.
Some may not happen, we're just getting them off the board and, every Monday. We also want to do one meet and greet with some staff. Yeah. There was some miscommunication that they were invited to the meet and confer, I don't know.
Whatever.
I guess my first question there was whether or not the committee was all available on those four Mondays.
Well, make them.
And if so, you know, did not have sent out the invitations and that kind of stuff. If, uh, it came up, like with the, uh, support staff and stuff, five thirty's pretty inconvenient, can we do it earlier if we need to?
I can, yeah, four.
James, how do you do it?
I won't be available, um, any earlier than five forty on the ten, that's the only date that I have time for.
Otherwise, you're good for the others.
Yeah.
Because it might help to turn it off.
Yeah.
Have a little early, everyone gets it done. So, um, the teacher's process is to, you know, do the, do the meet and confer by all the teachers, you know, and then, sort through their things, share, you know, the board's position on supplemental and stuff, and talk about that. And, um, and then divvy it off in terms of what's policy or handbook stuff versus what's wage. And so, and support staff kind of the same thing. And maybe if, if you can keep those Mondays there, maybe we'll use one of them, just nail down recommendations for the foreboard and all the other groups.
Sounds good, sounds good.
If you're good, that's what we'll do, I'll try and knock them down with the groups.
Do we want a public relations meeting for the newsletter?
Probably, probably-
Can we let the newsletter go out again?
Probably the, right, probably the weekend of the, um, annual meeting, maybe? I'm assuming about a month, a hundred months, we should get all the information. When does it, when do the newsletters usually go out, do we know?
Last week.
Last week, so, why don't we make it the last week of October?
Twenty-four?
No, no, not that. Um, like the twenty-sixth, Wednesday? Twenty-sixth, Wednesday, that work? Okay. All right, any other committee meetings? No, all right, future meeting dates. Um, I know it's on here, we have a board of education meeting and annual meeting, Saturday night, we don't know.
You gotta kind of peak in your involvement here, is that how you do it, or we just-
No, typically, we do that on its own.
Yeah, it's its own meeting.
So we can just scratch, uh, like a regular board meeting or anything.
Last year, we did it together.
Did we do it together last year? Frank, did we do it together last year?
I didn't think we did, but maybe we did.
Uh, normal class every day.
Yeah, we had a regular meeting, pretty sure we, we all, for them stuff, no, that's what I did.
I think I missed it. Yeah, you weren't there because I am a meeting, but I came at that during time before.
All right, sure.
So you think you did the fourth one?
I know, I know, sir.
Yeah.
I think so.
I know the one thing we can't change is the day of the annual meeting.
I know, that's our impulsive.
Right.
I'm okay either way, because I-
Doesn't matter. I can both sit for after, you know, you just give an approximate time, or after.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
It won't take more than the afternoon or the evening.
I blasted five people.
Yeah.
Bart, have you set a P I S?
Um, tentatively, one say the twenty-sixth. What time?
Um, I don't know. I don't know.
Jim, you, you just had.
You just had it on the hand, you know.
Um, four thirty. Forty-four thirty, you four thirty on Wednesday? All right, four thirty to Wednesday?
Four thirty to twenty-sixth.
I still say, did you get your info?
Marty?
Did you get your info?
Yes.
So these four personnel meetings, those are just hypothetic, right?
Yeah, I just wanted you to calendar them up, and I'll send them out, and we'll get it confirmed, and I'll let you know.
Okay, all right, upcoming district events, you make anything? District events, anybody, who wants?
Oh, I just wanted to announce, um, Will Seston, um, has been, oh, you probably saw it in the thing, got a letter of commendation as a finalist in the National Merit Scholarship. I mean, he doesn't get to go on, because only sixteen thousand students get to go on, but he was in the top five percent of one point six million nationwide. And, um, according to Kurt, who's been here twenty-seven years, it's the only time that he, that he even had a, you know, finalist, full ace semi-final. So, pretty, pretty big deal. So he has, you know.
Awesome, good job.
Yeah. It's at least a really cool thing that he gets to put on his resume.
Two more, two more football games, both Saturdays. Um, the Saturday and abundant life, that was wrong.
So it's not a football?
Uh, and then, then the last one will be Saturday at one o'clock on the A here, provided they have a team.
And that's the one that the-
So currently, they're five in the morning.